Good evening and welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting. It is March 26th.
Seven.
I'm Sue Crane. Seven, sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
Whoops.
Yep.
Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have two monthly statements, January and February, statements of the supervisor. And thank you Debbie for reconciling these two months. I know you've had a busy couple of months. So, to the Town of Red Hook Monthly Statement of the Supervisor, January 31st, 2013, to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, pursuant to Section 119 of the Town Law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the supervisor during the month. The opening balance was $2,049,594. Receipts were $1,057,929. We dispersed $1,255,621, leaving a balance at the end of January of $1,851,902. Okay. You will see that in January, the transfer tax that was realized was $70,523. February 28th, 2013, to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, pursuant to Section 119 of the Town Law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the supervisor during the month of February. The opening balance was $1,851,902. Receipts were $1,126,313. We dispersed $333,697, leaving a balance of $2,644,517. And we have some budget adjustments. In the General A Fund, there is a total increase in revenues of $33,148, and you can see the detail of that. The reduction in appropriations is an amount of $20,886. The total increase in appropriations is $54,034. In the General B Fund, we have an increase in revenues of $15,482, and an increase in Are there any questions regarding that detail? Hearing none, is there a statement to accept the supervisor's report?
Yes, both January and February supervisors' report as presented.
Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Deborah, are there any comments you would like to make? We asked you to be with us.
Just a couple. You'll notice in those adjustments, I reestablished some of the grant monies that were left over from some of the different committees of the press. And for the month of March, I plan on reviewing the revenues on them to make sure that I picked up all of the little odds and ends for donations that had been made for specifics, to bring that back up too this year for the, some of the other things I might have missed. So, all in all, it's in good order, everything ties out and balances. And I meet with Rose tomorrow, and we're going to review the debt and discuss capital planning. And then I meet next week with Rose and the supervisor about the capital plans. We'll update that with standard and cores for our Moody's rating, and then it gives us a good tool to use during budget time. So, we're, we'll be pretty good.
We are, and thank you very much for all the behind the scenes work. It's really, really been a huge effort, I know, on your part, especially since we changed our insurance plan this year. That put Debbie through a really, a lot of work that ordinarily is fairly free-flowing, so I appreciate that Debbie, and I know the board does. Thank you very much for that. Okay. Sue, you have.
This is the February abstract vouchers, 15,816 through 15,920. Out of the General A Fund, $51,392.05. In the General B Fund, $8,255.26. The Highway DB, $59,221.88. A PDR, $3,902.50. The Capital Project Sisem Road Bridge, $2,369.76. Capital Project Highway Garage, $787.50. Lighting, $2,177.01. Water O and M, $2,006.41, for a total of the abstracts, $130,112.37. I hereby certify that the vouchers numbered 15,816 through 15,920 processed in the month of February are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the Town Board. And then we also have March abstracts, which is voucher number 15921 through 16029. Out of the General A Fund, $174,698.52. Out of the General B, $38,922.35. Highway DB, $33,424.74. Out of the PDR, $595. Capital Project Sisem Road Bridge, $8,119.55. Capital Project, the Highway Garage, $4,604.25. SF Fire, $73,570.80. And the Water O and M, $5,297.96, for a total abstract of $339,233.17. And I hereby certify that the vouchers numbered 15,921 through 16,029 processed in the month of March are accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the Town Board. And this is written to the minutes. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you Sue. Is that going to be a monthly?
Yes.
It will be?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you Sue.
You're welcome.
In terms of announcements, which is where we are on the agenda right now, I've got one that gives me great pleasure, it always does, and it is a resolution honoring an Eagle Scout, yet again. We have another Eagle Scout, and this time it's Andrew Pope. His brother was honored a year or so ago, and Andrew has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, and the board is, takes great pleasure in honoring every Eagle Scout, as this is a huge, a huge achievement on the part of any scout who's been involved. It's a long, arduous road to become Eagle, and those boys who achieve it are demonstrating leadership and are held in high regard by everyone who knows them. And I think that the board is going to be especially proud of Andrew's achievements. As I read the resolution, you will remember the work that he did. So, I'd like to do that now and then ask you all to sign it. Whereas Andrew Charles Pope has completed the requirement for, and having been examined by an Eagle Scout Board of Review, was found worthy of the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas the Eagle is the highest and most prestigious recognition in scouting. And whereas Andrew's Eagle Scout project consisted of recovering artifacts and cleaning up a collapsed historic building at St. Margaret's Historic Site. And whereas through his achievement, Andrew has shown leadership, devotion to duty, and is a true example of the best of our youth. And whereas Andrew's achievement as Eagle Scout will be acknowledged at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor on April 21st, now therefore be it resolved that the Red Hook Town Board honors and commends Andrew Charles Pope for his achievement of requiring the rank of Eagle Scout, and authorizes that this resolution be passed to commemorate his achievement. And it's dated today, March 27th, 2013. And I so move. Is there a second?
Jim?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And I think this may very well be more than twenties, into the twenties of boys in Red Hook, who have, Red Hook and the Red Hook area, who have achieved Eagle Scout. A second Eagle Scout is William Matthew Espana Gross. Whereas William Matthew Espana Gross has completed the requirement for, having been examined by Eagle Scout Board of Review and was found worthy of the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Eagle is the highest and most prestigious recognition. Whereas William's Eagle Scout project consisted of painting and installing a new roof on the maintenance garage of St. Margaret's Historic Site. And whereas through his achievement, he has shown leadership, devotion to duty, and is a true example of the best of our youth, his Eagle Scout Court of Honor will be April 14th. Now therefore be it resolved that the Red Hook Town Board honors and commends William Matthew Espana Gross for his achievement of acquiring the rank of Eagle Scout, and authorizes that this resolution be passed to commemorate this high achievement, dated March 27th, 2013. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The boys enjoy receiving these, these resolutions, and the ceremony is open to the public, and usually is announced a week in advance. And it's truly an honor to attend these, these Eagle Scout Court of Honor. And I'm not sure who enjoys them most, the scout or the parents, because the parents are largely responsible, I think, in all the work that goes on behind the scenes with these kids, and they, they truly have, just, they're the best that we have, so we're very, very proud of them. I have a couple of save the dates. One is 2013 Duchess County Economic Development Annual Breakfast is on May 9th at the Poughkeepsie Grand Hotel. This is a save the date, and the speaker will be the SUNY Chancellor, Dr. Nancy Zinfer. Duchess Land Conservancy will be offering a two-hour course on conservation easements and subdivisions, what works and what does not. And that is going to be offered at the Duchess Land Conservancy office on Monday, April 29th, at 6:30 to 8:30. That's on Route 82 in Melbrook, and we have more information on that, should you need Just as, it's not on the agenda, but it, because we're, we're not far along enough to really formalize this project, but I just wanted everyone to know that, because we've been asked, that we are going to move forward with investigating the removal of the former Highway Garage, and we'll be working with our engineers to do that as expeditiously as we can, now that the weather's improved, and, and we'll see where that goes. So, we'll be reporting more on that in the weeks ahead. But I just, I've been asked a number of times what's going to happen, and so we'll be working on that. Is there any, are there any other announcements on the part of any of the board? I'm sorry. Chris, I can hear you.
Sue.
Oh, I beg your pardon. The scout is here. The scout is here. Come forward. Come forward and let us congratulate you.
He's not the Eagle Scout.
He's not the Eagle Scout. Well, that's okay. Come forward anyway.
You're on the spot.
He's a scout though, right?
Yes, he is.
Tell us, tell us your name.
I'm Ben Kosik.
Ben Kosik? And Ben, are you here as part of a badge that you're working on?
Yeah, citizenship and the community.
Citizenship and the community.
In the community.
In the community.
Okay.
Excellent, excellent. And what level of Boy Scout are you?
I am a star, but I'm becoming life very soon.
And how many badges have you earned?
A little bit over 20 badges.
20?
Yes.
That's probably 10 more than I ever did in my whole life. That's astounding. Good for you, good for you. Are you going, do you think that you may shoot for becoming an Eagle someday?
Yes.
You do. A lot of the boys in your, are you true 42?
Yes.
A lot of those boys are very, very dedicated to becoming Eagles, aren't they? You've seen that again and again. Yeah. How long have you been a scout?
I think three years.
Three years. And you're already a star. Wonderful, wonderful. Well, congratulations, and thank you for being with us tonight, and I hope it helps you with the badge you're earning. Thank you for coming. Now it's time for public comment. We have about 15 minutes. Is there any public comment? I have a feeling someone is here for that. Come forward, Dick.
I'm Dick Franklin from Red Hook, local troublemaker. I actually came here to talk about hydro fracking, because I saw it on your discussion panel. I've been doing a lot of research on it, and I've been talking to a lot of people from around the country. As you probably know, we've been seeing a lot of sinkholes, and some of them are through an old friend called unintended consequences. And what's happened is, in California and Colorado, where they're, we're doing a lot of hydro fracking, and a lot of it has slowed down, the glory holes, where they were doing mining for gold, have been undermined with water and chemicals, and have started exacerbating a problem. Rock is not uniform throughout the country, and we have a unique layer, which is our mozzarella shale, which contains radon, and all shale contains rather noxious materials and metals and what have you. I brought a piece of rock that came from Herkimer County, and I'll show it to you. The neat thing about this rock is you can see how solid it is, and people would build houses on it. By the way, it's a great place to go if you want to get Herkimer diamonds, which is a quartz material. The kids love to break it out and understand it. But what you're holding there, if I put that into a hammer mill, I would reduce it by the volume by about 70 percent. There is a lot of air around that. If I add water and other chemicals, I could reduce it another 10 percent, and dissolve a lot of other materials into our water table at one time. We've got to be careful with this. We've made a lot of mistakes, but we didn't understand what was going on. In the 1950s, Russia, China, and the United States were blowing up bombs all over the place, and plutonium was floating in the air. Believe it or not, it almost shut down the Eastman Godac Corporation at that time, because one particle of plutonium would burn through a five-foot roll of film, which had to be discarded. We had to make five changes of clothing before we could get into the buildings to manufacture the films of the day. Unintended consequences. So, when we get in here, people start talking about, isn't this wonderful, we're going to make all this money? Beware. It is my opinion, it's going to cost us a great deal of money to fix the problems that go along with it. All of the hype that's going on is ignoring everything else. And the one last thing I will say here, is Congress, according to the Supreme Court, can define anything as to what it wants to be. Solid waste, the definition, which is in CFR, is liquids, solids, gases, semisolids, semiliquids. And at any time, they can change that definition to anything it wants, depending upon what lobby and what pressure is applied. And we have to bear the result of those definitions. I mentioned one other time, when I was here before the board, be careful of free waste, because we own it. The minute we take possession, we own it and the liabilities that go along with it. This is not going to be an easy issue to deal with, but we must keep in mind, one size doesn't fit all, and one solution is not the answer. We've seen this throughout our history, and this is coming up like the old boom days, when we first discovered oil on Sutter's Mill. Now we're facing the problems. Thirty percent of our planet's landmass and the geology has been undermined with marble and other materials. Yes, we have different rock strata according to the ages, but our planet is a moving and living entity. It changes, and there's nothing we're going to do about it. Even our climate changes, and I can demonstrate that in a small beaker with a dye and water. If it ever becomes uniform, we're doomed, because it's the changes and the ebb and flow that dictate and help us have life and manage our agriculture and many other things. And these are the things that we have to look at. All of this hype that it's political, forget the politics. The science is known and understood. The oldest one of unintended consequences, and I will end on this one point, I promise, in Egypt, when they discovered papyrus, it was a wonderful material, everybody could write on it. They went and they cut down all of the papyrus weeds, and they were making all kinds of papyrus. They also killed the habitat of birds, and they had one of the greatest infestations of crop-eating insects and disease that they ever had. There is a book, which was written in 1884, which is the History of Disease and Pestilence, and it's an amazing book to read. We laugh when we say it's that old, but it was a gathering of history at the time of the beginning of recorded history up until that point. And it gives you a clear picture that we can't take anything for granted, and we have to question everything before we go on these massive projects. We're not going to get too many second chances. Too many things are changing. We found the impacts of Sandy, of Katrina, just in storms alone. Mount St. Helens blew. And we're faced with the potential of earthquakes, not just on the coast, but also on the interior. And by the way, if you remember, about two years ago, we had one here. So, nothing can be taken for granted, and we have to be careful. Slick publications are made on clay paper, they're wonderful. Pictures are magnificent. I have Photoshop. I can tell you a million ways how we can phony the data and create anything you want. But the real data has to be known and understood, and what that impact is to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Thank you, Dick. Is there any other public comment before we move on to the agenda? Yes. Linda?
Linda Kealan. When you do take down the old highway building, will the material be recycled in any way? Could you explain what might be?
We are very much hoping that it will be recycled. And as you probably know, most of it is metal, and it is 1940s steel. And we have had some conversations with the aerodrome officials who are interested. We're not at a position to discuss exactly when or how, or even if they can, move any portion of it, but they're very interested. It would be appropriate for their site, and that would be, in my opinion, a wonderful recycling of an historic piece. Right. So, that's going to be part of the discussion, and we'll be reporting as those, as those things develop, okay? Thank you. Anybody else? In which case, we can move into the agenda. We're going to try to move right along tonight, because we've got an attorney-client session at the end of the meeting, and we think that we can get through this fairly quickly. The first thing on the agenda is that the Town Board acknowledges the Town of Red Hook Justice Department audit of 2012, conducted by our Town Accountant Lori Doty, who is a CPA. This is a resolution to acknowledge that the required audit of the Town of Red Hook Justice Court was conducted. Regarding the subject of attached documentation, I ask that the Town Board pass the following resolution for compliance with Section 2019-A and the Unified Court System Action Plan for the Justice Courts. The Town Board of the Town of Red Hook acknowledges that the required audit of the Town of Red Hook Justice Court for the period ending December 31st, 2012, was conducted, and again, by Town Accountant Lori Doty, CPA. And I so move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I have a copy of that independent auditor's report for you to take a peek at. It will be, I believe Deb will have it, should you want to look at it. It is in writing. The second item on the agenda in regard to resolutions is simply reaffirming the fact that the supervisor is issuing a notice of community preservation fund availability. And we did talk earlier about the CPA fund. It is building again. I believe I looked today, and it's over $240,000. You know that that's a restricted fund, and that we have a committee of people who are devoted to looking at specific uses that that fund can be used for, but it is growing again, and we're very pleased about that. And so, we will be issuing a notice of community preservation fund availability. Thank you. Then I'd like to have just a resolution to authorize me to engage the town engineer to determine the feasibility of removing the old Highway Garage. Would someone make a motion for discussion purposes, if nothing else?
Let's go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion about that item tonight? We will need, we will need to get some professional advice and then we'll...
We're all in agreement, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that?
Harriet.
Thank you.
And lastly, I have a memo here from Ted Cudsey. The subject is highway vehicle purchase. The Highway Department is proposing to buy a pickup truck to replace an existing vehicle. The present vehicle is 2001 Dodge Ram, 12 years old, with 127 miles on it. The expected life of the truck is 10 to 15 years. It has had hard usage, being used for secondary road plowing, cul-de-sac plowing, and is an everyday truck for many routine tasks. The plowing assembly... The plowing assembly needs to be replaced completely. It is obsolete, and parts are no longer available. Vehicle has had numerous repairs. The proposed truck is a 2013 Ford, purchased under state contract. The dealer is Van Boratul Ford in Rochester, New York. It is a 213, 250 XL Supercab 4WD 8.0.
2013.
What did I say?
213.
213? Well, I was close. Zeros don't count. 2013, thank you. Thank you for listening, Bill. This will be a gas rather than diesel vehicle, and it will have a plow. And we have received a quotation and options with highway personnel, and they appear to be reasonable and necessary for the planned workload. The total cost of the truck is $32,469.99 under the contract, which is considerably lower than retail. Ted recommends the approval of this purchase. And I so move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There is discussion?
Just a question.
Yes.
We know that we couldn't get that out of our local dealer for the same price. Just a question.
Probably be $10,000 more.
State contract is municipally priced, and it's always lower than if you went to your local dealer, and they award the contract to specific dealers. So you would not be able to purchase it for any less than what you're getting in a state contract.
Okay. Okay. And is that an annual renewal of that state contract with different dealers? Is that an annual bid? Just, I don't know.
Sometimes it is, and sometimes they extend it, but in our experience, they may do, Chevy may have the contract for that particular size vehicle one year, Ford has the contract this year, maybe Dodge another year. So this year, Ford has that particular contract for that size vehicle.
Okay. Thank you, Teresa. So all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We were hoping for a Panda Board report, but I don't see Mary Ann Harvey here, so let's skip that. If she comes, all the better. I believe in your folder, you will find the 2013 budget, and that's for your records. It shows the 2013 budget is essentially unchanged, except for maybe a slight reduction from 2012, which is quite a remarkable thing. They have a new board, and they're working hard. Mary Ann is very excited about some of the things that are happening at Panda, so we'll talk to her next time she's here. The next item on the agenda is the topic of planning board fees, which was open the last time we were together, and Bill O'Neill agreed to take it to the task force and report back to us some thoughts and recommendations, Bill.
Yes, the intermunicipal task force at our weekly meetings in March discussed the request by the developer for the Hoffman Property TND project, which is off Old Farm Road south of the village of Red Hook. It's presently before the planning board, and his request was to waive the required application fees under the TND code. For this particular project of approximately 96 units, the value of those fees are about And after reviewing the matter, it was the consensus of the task force to recommend that the town board not waive the application fees and not change the calculation of such fees as applied to this particular project. So that was the decision of the intermunicipal task force, as requested by the town board.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any questions with Bill? Any comments now that you've had a chance to look at these fees associated with planning By way of credit, I want to thank Paula Schoonmaker, the Planning Secretary, who has done all the research to look at former, our history, and the research in local towns around us to try to identify, is what we charge reasonable and a going rate or comparable rate with others? And I think you're saying that it is.
Yes, and I think there are other things that have to be done by this particular project to identify exactly what their position is as far as what they claim as the fees, and why would be exorbitant or unjust in this particular case to have the town apply that scheduled fee.
It should turn out to be pretty much an even swap for our costs in terms of dealing with this. We compared it with the other towns, and we're in the ballpark of what other towns have charged, and there are a great deal of, we've actually spent a good deal of time with them already with planning board and the task force, which is good. It's nothing negative about that, it's very positive. But it is quite costly, and it looks like these fees make sense, which is the most I can say.
Well, it makes sense to me after Paula got it all lined up in such neat order that I was able to really be able to review various towns around, the town of Hyde Park, the town of Pleasant Valley, the town of Rhinebeck, and so on. And while there are variations on the theme insofar as how different municipalities charge their planning fees, nevertheless, if you add it up and look at a total project, which this, the one we're talking about, is a major development, we certainly seem to fall into the amount of money that's charged elsewhere for a similar-sized project. Any further comment?
Does the planning board weigh in? You know, they're the ones that deal with it every day, as what they felt with us.
I can't say.
I think the request was directed to the town board, and the planning board did not...
Didn't comment. I know they're the ones that charge the fee, and they deal with it on a daily basis, so I just wonder if they'd had a comment, but they didn't.
Charlie Lang.
The board didn't, the planning board did not discuss it.
We do have planning board representation on the task force, so they would have been part of the discussion. Charlie Lang in particular.
Well, thank you, Bill. Then I'm assuming that the board is not going to undertake any changes at this time, unless someone has anything more to say. We'll move to the next agenda item.
No, I would say, you know, going by the, you know, the recommendation of our task force, if the issue comes up, it's something that we can look at, you know, we've certainly got a lot of information that's...
Right.
But at this time, I would agree with you personally.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the issue of hydro fracking, and we have had multiple presentations here, referrals to countless documents that have been published regarding the hydro fracking issue. And we have asked for and gotten three law, local laws for the board's consideration, and they are different in respect to the areas that they address. They all are related to hydro fracking. If we could just take them maybe one at a time and discuss them one at a time, that might be the best way to handle it. Okay? Do you have them in your folder? They're under tab four.
No, some of us don't.
Some of you don't have it? Would you like a copy of mine, or can we share?
I can share. I can share with Brenda and Jim.
The first, if we could...
I have them home.
I thought they were to be under, behind tab four. I'm sorry if they're not.
No, she just has a letter there.
She just has a letter from Victoria.
Okay.
Turn your water.
They had them set around the corner.
Yeah. Perhaps one of you could read this, a letter from Victoria. That would be smart.
Let's not do that, but I can go through the procedures if you'd like.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Do you want me to just...
Why don't you sum it up? Why don't you sum it up for us, and we'll...
So we prepared three specific laws. The first one would prohibit use of brine on town roads. There are specific definitions as to what that is, but they're generally relating to byproducts of the oil and gas production product. And the second one would amend our existing zoning code, which currently prohibits heavy industry, to very specifically include natural gas and oil extraction activities as part of our heavy industry definition, and include that in our existing code language. And the third one is also an amendment to our existing code language regarding refus, and incorporates the disposition or disposal of natural gas or oil drilling waste products in a town. So it's really a three-pronged approach to the issue. We already have a fairly substantial zoning ordinance that addresses, you know, the area, but this is a more specific provision defining it with regard to this process. So procedurally, the next step, if you find that you'd like to be in touch with these, is that you would need to have an environmental assessment form prepared by your planner, probably. And you have, as you said, quite a bit of background information that the board's already had in front of them from the CAC and others as a foundation for that. So if we can get that prepared, then we would just need to prepare a notice of public hearing and set a public hearing at that point. That would be the next step.
And I believe our zoning review committee and the CAC have both debuted the drafted laws.
And that has to be sent down to the county at the same time?
The EIS, Part One and Two are complete, and have been done by the planner, and half of Part Three is, Part Three is half-finished.
Oh, we have a Part One and Two area yet, because I haven't seen it.
Yeah. I think she just...
You haven't seen it yet. Oh, okay.
It's probably in the mail.
Okay.
I spoke with her today, and told her that I would call her in the morning if it was the board's wish to move forward with the completion of the EAF. She has begun fleshing it out, but we don't have a complete finished product until she gets direction from the board that it is what we want to do. And so I don't think, certainly in my mind, there's no doubt in my mind that I, we don't use brine that is hydro fracking brine on our roads today, either the county, the state, or the town. Right?
Correct.
And none of us wish that to happen because of our aquifer, so that law seems to me to be self-evident. Does anyone have anything to say about that, in disagreement to that?
Oh, no.
No, I agree.
Okay, so that's one law that we could move forward with. The second, to add to the current law that we have in the town books that prohibits heavy industry, simply identifies the hydro fracking for natural gas and oil extraction as a heavy industry. So it would be very specific that it would be added to that piece of the law. Does anyone have any concerns about that?
No, I mean, we already do prohibit heavy industry, and this is just to clarify that it includes fracking, so.
But specifically, the fracking for gas and oil exploration?
Yes.
Right.
That's going to be one thing that would be defined in the heavy industry section of our existing zoning by this law.
Right. And do you have this, Jim?
No, I don't.
Why don't I pass that to you, so you can see the language on the second page, because it's very clear that we're talking about the heavy industry category, and that this is added very specifically to that.
Can I ask that the brine that they're talking about is specifically brine that is a byproduct of fracking?
Yep.
Or not?
No.
Basically, well, not...
Right, right. I think we talked about this once before, Teresa, but that is a good question. It is saying that any refuse, sludge, or other waste materials as a result of natural gas and oil exploration is prohibited. Okay, can we move on to the next one, under consideration?
Before you jump to the next one?
I'd like you to hold questions till we finish, if you would, please. The third is local law amending Chapter 84 of the town code, which prohibits the disposal of natural gas or oil drilling waste products in the town of Red Hook. And it too is quite clear about what we're talking about. It amends Chapter 84 of our town, our existing town law, to prohibit natural gas or oil drilling waste disposal facilities within the town of Red Hook. And I'll pass that on for Brenda and Jim. I apologize, I thought these were included in your packet.
Do we have addressed this issue that Brandy brought up, some household wells for water?
Yes, the law is very specific, and that's why I passed it on to show that.
I didn't find it in there, though.
Yeah, no, no, no. It's very specific. We're talking about drilling that is specific to gas and petroleum. Right. Because there is hydro fracking done for water supply that's done throughout town. That is not the issue at hand here. Okay, so do we need to take these one at a time, or can we just say we would like the planner to move ahead with the EAF?
Right, and then both formally lay them on the desk with the EAF when we call the public hearing.
Okay.
I don't think we formally introduce them with the EAF, so I think what we'll do is re-label them with the 2013 local law date pursuant to track and introduce them with the EAF, ready with that package. Should we bring that to the April meeting if she's ready?
Yes, she said she thought, if I call her tomorrow, that she can be ready for the April 9 meeting with the complete EAF, and we will hope to declare on that deck them. Okay?
We wouldn't declare on that deck, we would just begin the process of circulating...
That's right, it gets circulated, right? Yeah, okay, sorry. It goes to the planning board and also to the county. Hopefully, we will have it back by April 24 meeting. She and I kind of ran down the calendar as to how this might work, and it looks like if we refer to the April 9 meeting to the planning board, by the April 24 meeting, it could be back to the town board. That's our hope. So I guess I should make a motion that we proceed.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Are you going to send the public hearing?
Yeah, we need to do it. Thank you all. So we're going to move quickly through board reports if we can. We'll start with the planning board monthly report. Brenda and Jim, you're... Brenda and Jim, you're the liaisons. Would you like to make that report? Sure, that's fine.
The planning board held two meetings in March. The board continues to discuss three residential developments that preserve at Lakeskill off Feller Newmark Road, the Hoffman Traditional Neighborhood Development off Old Farm Road, and Anderson Commons off Baxter Road. In addition, the board granted a special permit and limited site plan approval to a farmer's market on Pitcher Lane, a certificate of appropriateness to a project in Berrytown, and site plan approval to a solar panel array on the Bard campus. The board also continued to discuss several smaller projects, including a minor subdivision on North Drive, a minor subdivision on Middle Road, a minor subdivision on West Willetts Drive, and a lot line alteration on Starberg Road.
Thank you, Jim. Now, the CBA?
Yeah, I have the report, there wasn't a, I can read it, it's only a two-line thing. The last zone Board of Appeals, the client, the applicant before them for the public hearing had forgotten about it, and just their contractors. Unfortunately, we don't have too much report on the CBA, it says. They're in the middle of working with the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Requesting a variance for the location of her garage next to her existing dwelling.
Okay, and I don't believe we've had any ethics board meetings, so that's a good thing, and we'll move right along with department reports. Brenda, I believe you have the animal control officer's report?
Yes, she, there were eight new licenses issued, 41 renewals, one found dog, and one in proper shelter report, one barking dog report. And just as a note, there were 755 licenses sold last year. And then related to that, but not from our dog, our animal control officer, the dog park committee is continuing to make progress on their work in cooperation with Rhinebeck.
Good. Weather's improving, the puppies are going to be happy if we get that dog park going. Okay. We had a quarterly report from the assessor last time. Chris, do you have anything to report? Deb, we know. Rose Rider, do you have a report that you'd like to give?
I'll leave to say that it's a time of year again when we're starting to look at the capital equipment budget and the five-year plan and update that. And I've started meetings with the departments on those issues, as well as meeting with the supervisor and business manager. So that will continue now, but I'll be back to you on that.
Thank you. Jim or Bill? Bill, the building permits before?
Well, we have a report from the building, on the zoning enforcement officers, and we'll just give you the numbers. They did 44 inspection reports. This is again for the period, let's say roughly February 25th to March 26th. They also issued total 25 certificates during that period, and examined applications for permits for 12 applicants, which we call permit reports. So they've been pretty busy. And as far as complaints, dealing with complaints, there were only two complaints during the period that were attended to. And they submitted their complete reports, which have been provided to everybody on the town board.
Thank you. We can very briefly say that we have submitted to New York State Department of State the Local Government Efficiency Grant that was due early this month. It made the deadline. We believe it's a strong application. It is a grant application that will look at the ways that we can derive efficiencies from combining the functions of highway departments among the three entities, the two villages, and the town. So we're hoping that because we've got some history in sharing services and because the Red Hook Village already occupies space with the town under Teresa's guidance, that we're well on our way to demonstrating that we can work together. The question is, where are the savings going to come from, and we're hoping that the study will show us that. Highway department report, Teresa?
Nothing except for, we hope that winter is over, and we'll be starting our spring cleaning next week by starting our sweeping program for the roads and lawn raking. So we hope that the weather will hold.
So do we. Thank you, Teresa. It's been a very good winter for you, hasn't it?
Good in...
In the sense that you haven't been buried in snow all winter.
No, but it, we had some tiring storms, so.
You plowed three times in one storm, didn't you?
Okay, well, we appreciate your fine work, and we have no complaints in our department about it. That means you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We have a purchasing report. I believe I gave the police report last time, so I don't have anything further to add to that, but the purchasing report is Harry, I believe. Do you have that, Harry?
Yes, it's very brief. They were, Ted is always is busy. Had a lot of small orders last month, and one large one for surprise price sold for the highways. He bought roughly $17,000 worth of that, and he says here he recommends we buy a truck, which we just did.
Great, thank you, Harry. By the way, it's good to have you back. We missed you.
Emma Spina.
Yeah, you were...
It's fun.
This is fun.
Fun, except when it's not fun.
When it's not fun. This has been an easy one. The water department, Jim, I believe that one's yours. Do you have that one?
I've got a couple copies, I don't seem to get two or three copies. Everything seems to be fine. The normal is 80,000 gallons per day water pumped, and in February we pumped 87,000, 87 and a half thousand gallons per day. If you recall, last month, we were way below the normal amount, but for some reason, February we were above it. I was going to ask Hank if he had any thoughts on that. And as far as the wells are holding their own, the normal for well one is 54 feet of water above the pump, and we have 52 feet of water above the pump. I want to ask Hank about that, because that's the way it's been running steadily, so I wonder if the normal is actually 52 or 54. And then in well two, the normal's 42 feet of water above the pump, and we've been running 45, if you look at the prior reports. Other than that, the sanitary quality, filters are all working, and they've got, you know, their normal, few projects planned for the coming screen around the pump house and a few other repair things.
Great, Jim, thank you. Hank asked me when we would like to have his annual report, and I believe it's due before the end of April, so we'll maybe schedule that for the fourth Wednesday of next month. So we'll look forward to hearing from Hank then. Okay, committee reports.
We also have some recycling members.
Oh, good, good.
And they were from the recycling manager, T.J. Hackett's annual report to the DEC. And so in 2012, there were 72 tons of commingled recycled, that's glass, plastic, and cans. There were 107 tons of mixed paper, 39 tons of cardboard, and 18 tons of scrap metal, and an estimate of about 10 tons of electronics, which was the new item added. And a lot of people ask us where these things go, so the metal, the paper and the commingled and cardboard, they go to Alster County Resource Recovery, and the metal is sold at Millens in Kingston, and we get the profit from that. And last year, they sold 820 permits to the tune of about 13,000.
Excuse me.
Got you. That's a lot of business out there, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
That's a lot of, a lot of stuff moving through that center. I think that the center is well organized now. We had the help of the highway department last, I think it was a year ago, wasn't it, Teresa, when we, you helped reorganize the flow of traffic out there, and it seems to, it doesn't seem to be the bottleneck that there was, so.
It was a hundred percent improvement.
Yeah, it really was. It really was. It seems to be very smooth. Okay, thank you very much. Bill, you're Ag and Open Space Advisory, do you have a report?
Oh, yeah, the committee met last night, and there was considerable discussion about looking at the, asking the town board to look at the zoning in the new Centers and Green Space Plan as far as the definition of farm markets and requiring special permits. And at the same time, also asked that, and I agreed as liaison to report back to them by the next meeting about the escrow fees and the planning board. There was an issue among many of the farmers at the meeting with respect to their business applications, you know, for farmers' markets, that there was a question about the fees and, you know, where the money went in the escrow accounts. So that's a bit of a continuing issue which is being addressed, and...
And fencing.
And fencing is a subject that had been considered by the town board, as we know, years ago, by the zoning review committee. And the Ag and Open Space Committee is going to write a letter, I believe, that they're going to ask the town board to review the fencing requirements in the zoning with respect to agricultural fencing. So I believe that they've been requested to propose certain language, either to create a definition of agricultural fencing, and then to make a recommendation that there be certain exemptions made in our zoning to agricultural fencing. So again, that's an issue that's being addressed and being worked on. Is there anything else on that? That's it.
Okay, thank you, Bill. In terms of those questions, are you going to, how are we going to respond to that concern about escrow fees?
Well, what I propose to do is speak to those in the planning board about the subject and the planner, and maybe the attorney for the town, but, you know, make some inquiries between now and the end of April, and be able to report back to the Ag and Open Space Committee, and then the membership there will make their decision on how they want to approach it.
Okay, good, thank you, Bill. I don't think the Community Preservation, Farmland Protection Committee has met, but they intend. Conservation Advisory Council, is there a report? Have you anything of conservation?
I did not receive a report from the CAC, is that what you asked? Sorry. The Waste Subcommittee has been very active and meeting regularly, and they're exploring such things as composting and organic waste composting, food waste and organic waste composting is what I'm trying to say. And I, they're looking at some of the ways, things that are recycled at the recycling centers, so I'm hoping we get some recommendations from them. And some of the committee visited New Pulse's zero-waste facility, which was very interesting.
How large is that, Brenda?
The facility? Oh, more than 100 acres, isn't it? Or 80 some.
So there's acres altogether, but it includes a, you know, a landfill.
A cap landfill.
A cap landfill.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how big the actual facility is, but it serves a pretty large population. I think the budget was over 100,000, no?
Like 140, I think.
140.
Wow.
The budget.
Mm-hmm. Wow.
But they do one-site composting, so it was interesting to see how that worked, and it was a very simple process, that they had no problems with it. Good. So we're hoping to have something like that in our future, we just have to find a spot.
Spot wanted.
A spot wanted.
Okay. I don't think we have a design review hamlet committee report. Disaster preparedness, we're all quiet on that home front, I believe. Dick, do you have anything to report in that regard?
The only thing I'm going to add to that is that next month, I'm going to call for a meeting. We don't need them that often. I think we've got a great group and a great organization, and Teresa's done a magnificent job relative to our primary needs, but we are, and I have started working on the rewrite of portions of the disaster preparedness manual that you have seen. So there will be a 2013 version of that coming out in the near future, but it has to be reviewed by the full committee and sent to the town board before we go beyond our recommendation.
Great, thank you, Dick. Thanks for working on that. And Teresa? I haven't anything from economic development, does anyone here have?
No, I do not, and my plan is to go away tomorrow morning.
Okay, great, great. Bill, inter municipal task force?
Well, at the weekly meetings in March, in addition to considering that application by the developer at the Hoffman TND, which I just previously reported on, the task force also considered another request by the same developer that the town waive or withhold the incentive zoning fees required under the Centers and Green Space Plan prior to planning board approval for this project, which the Hoffman property TND project would involve this concept of incentive zoning with about approximately 30 units that would be allowed beyond what would ordinarily be allowed. And for that, of course, there's a fee, and the fees would be almost $600,000 in this particular project. So the task force considered that. Again, the consensus of the task force was to recommend that the town board not waive this fee requirement for this project. The proposal was on a building permit basis, and it's anticipated that should the developer follow up and propose, for example, phasing in the development over stages with proportionate fees during those proposed phases, that the town board, the planning board, very carefully consider the, you know, the proposal by the developer. Because again, there could be issues raised on that phasing aspect. There were a couple of other issues presented by the developer that the task force considered in the sense that the proposed, the zoning that was passed last year, which we commonly call the Centers and Green Space Plan, you know, did not anticipate every little issue that would arise with a particular project. So of course, we're going through the process now of having to, you know, make some adjustments in the zoning, simply because certain things weren't anticipated. And in this case, with the proposed Hoffman Property TND project, there were a couple of issues concerning lot coverage, and so the task force recommended that we propose a resolution to the town board to amend the zoning, and Green Plan Inc. is going to be doing that paperwork for us. It'll be a very short law, just to correct what had not been anticipated when the law was crafted. The other request, a specific request by the developer to increase the maximum size of what we call a cottage home in the TND from 1200 square feet, the developer wanted to know if it could be increased to 1,500 square feet. This was considered also by the task force, and again, the consensus of the task force was to reject that request and not to propose any change in the code on that particular issue. The task force also discussed at length what's a continuing issue with Anderson Commons, where the developer presented to the town... where the developer presented to the town board last month a request through an intermunicipal agreement or by application for variance, area variance, the VBA, to make an adjustment in the density, which is allowed now under the current Centers of Green Space Plan in the zoning, from what was originally proposed by the developer a couple of years ago. And so that's, again, a continuing issue. It's really before the village board, the village planning board, to consider it before it comes back to the town board. And I think we're also then going to get opinions from the attorneys about how to proceed in the, you know, the quickest way, because it was the consensus of the task force that we should enable the developer in Anderson Commons to do that development like it had originally been proposed and agreed to by the town. We're only talking about a couple of units, two, three units or less. But then there was a question about what exactly the developer has in mind. So again, whether it's the municipal task force, the town board, the attorneys for the town, you have to wait until a specific plan is presented to us, you know, before we can respond to it. So I think there's a little bit more work that the developer has to do at Anderson Commons before he gets answers to his questions. And finally, the task force reviewed the proposed Preserve at Lake Skill project, which is also before the planning board. And I believe the planning board had asked the town board to give an opinion on the subject and the town board asked the task force to give an opinion. It is, of course, a limited development option under Centers and Green Space Plan, the type of development that was proposed in that new zoning. But the issues presented by the project is proposed by the developer, in this case, are raising a lot of issues, you know, for the, for the community, there's been a lot of discussion about them. And the task force considered them and the position of the task force is that when you consider some of the issues presented by the project, including reconfiguring the contour of the rural road, building a retaining wall, if that's a possibility or a requirement that may be applicable in this particular case, or changing the scenic views of that rural road, removing established trees in the process, if that's what the developer proposes, and the increase in traffic and also, of course, the cost of the long-range high maintenance, the cost to the town in the future for that road, were matters of serious consideration and concern and also that the planning board should consider the opinion of the Agriculture, Ag and Open Space Committee, which submitted a letter on the issue of the use of the land for agriculture in the future, the guaranteeing almost that certain portions of that property would remain in agriculture. And then some technical issues on, you know, how you, how you manage a proposal through a homeowners association as opposed to where a single property owner is required to maintain the property under some kind of an easement. So many, many issues like that. And I guess it was just the consensus of the task force that all of them are very serious and should be of concern and considered seriously. There was also a question of how are we required to respond in any way, or I'm not sure how that would be done, but if the task force was asked to give a sense of it, that's our, that's our report.
Thank you. It was a full meeting. The Rec Commission, Harry, would you have a report from the Rec Commission?
I picked on from John, but I did speak to him today and he is very aggressively moving forward getting the fields done. One of, the baseball fields are up in operation. One of them is in pristine condition, it's been rolled and whatever. So everything is moving along very nicely in spite of the weather and we will be up and running on schedule this summer, or spring, I should say. And we, of course, everyone knows we've sorted out our financial agreement with, between the Rec, our Rec facilities and the school Board of Education. And thank you, Sue, for doing that.
Thank you, Harry. St. Margaret's Committee, has anyone had a report on St. Margaret's Committee?
Rosemary.
Rosemary said yes.
Rosemary.
Rosemary's.
Hi.
Hi.
We had a meeting today and Trilby Ziverding attended the meeting and would like to be on the committee. So we're hoping, we're going to have her send her letter of intent. And I talked to Paul Fredericks today, who couldn't be with us because of a hospital stay. So we'd like the town board, we'd like to recommend Trilby to the town board as another member of our committee. That's one. We've raised about $300 in extra memberships, people who are joining the committee. And basically, we're just talking and looking forward to Arbor Day and Earth Day, where we intend to drive in a horse and buggy to St. Margaret's. The Marcia Pell tree is planted at St. Margaret's and a fellow by the name of Len Miller from Southlands Farm has agreed to take the horse and carriage with eight people seated in it. Trilby's going to pick up whatever releases from the quarter horses that are driving the carriage. And we're going to first go, this is Arbor Day, that's April 27th, from 9:30 in the morning to 2:00 in the afternoon. And we're going to escort, escort Marcia Pell to St. Margaret's, where we are going to put a plaque on the tree that has been honored in her name. And then we're going to proceed with the horse and carriage to the rec park, where a tree has been planted for the very honorable Marcus Molinaro, for his family. And hopefully, Madam Supervisor, you're going to say a few words and we're really delighted that you'll be there. And then we're going to return back here and then proclamations will be given to the town by hopefully our congressman, our senator, the county legislator, the county executive proclaiming Arbor Day again this year. There's a luncheon for all the volunteers that'll take place in this room. I've already located with our wonderful town clerk. And so, so it should be a good day. There's going to be artists' exhibitions, free seedlings will be given away by the Tree Committee. And we're going to have some music, hopefully a DJ. Farmers, Mr. Norman Gregg has offered his annual hayride for all the kids in the community. Mr. Migliorelli will have his farm market stand. So it'll be a really nice day, lots of vendors, and we hope everybody will attend. And we're sorry to see you go, Harry, but we're glad that Dr. Ross is going to be our new liaison for the St. Margaret's Committee. Thank you.
And Rosemary, remind me again what day of the month and what hour of the?
It's Saturday.
No, not that. The committee meets what day and hour?
It's the third of, oh, it's the fourth Wednesday.
Fourth Wednesday at what time?
At, it's going to change, Madam Supervisor. We usually meet at 4:00 PM, but now because Dr. Ross is the liaison and because of his hours at his office, we've decided to change the hours to 7:00 at night.
Okay.
And so our next meeting, we don't know if we're going to have the April 24th meeting because we have so much to do for the 27th.
Right.
But after that, because of Dr. Ross's schedule.
Okay.
We'll be doing it at 7:00.
Okay, great, thank you.
Oh, I have to add one other thing. Paula gave us a great update today on what was happening with the red money. So we're moving right along, we're getting new memberships and we're going to do a raffle. And we just really hope this committee will say yes to Trilby Ziverding being on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula, because that is, that is, has been such an astounding project and has taken a while, could you just say a few words about the wrap-up of the St. Margaret's project in terms of the restoration? Because you've worked for probably two solid or three solid, maybe four, years on that.
Well, most of all the, let's see, the two phases of the construction are just about finished. There's some wrapping up to do, there's a couple little things of painting kinds of things that have to wait until it gets warmer. And then once those are finished, we will have a technical oversight person from New York State Parks will come and take a look. It's got to all get signed off by the architect and by her. And then we have to get an, and then we have to get reimbursed, we have to get an audit. And it's, as you can, if you drive by, you can see it's, most everything is finished that we have money for at this time.
It's quite, quite a remarkable journey that, from start to where we are today. And we owe such an amount of praise and thanks to you for all the bookkeeping and all the legwork that you've done. Nobody realizes the amount of work behind a grant like that, particularly that one. New York State Parks and Rec is really tough and you've done a wonderful job. Thank you so much.
The roof on the entire building has now been replaced and the, the roof of the porch has been replaced and is waterproof, so the building is secure from the weather now. And it took all the money we had to do it.
Right.
But it's, it looks great.
Rosemary, did you mean to have it on town board meeting night, right? Your meeting, that's when that's scheduled?
Oh, Brenda, thanks a lot. Jim won't be able to be here, if that's the case.
It's going to be a Wednesday night, Rose, the zoning board is on the second Wednesday, so the third Wednesday, I don't believe there's anything scheduled.
The third Wednesday would work, I think.
That's great. That's great. Thanks, Brenda, for pointing that out. And also, we're going to see if we can get some money from the county, from their historic, they have a fund for, you know, historic sites. So we're going to make an application if we can. I don't know how the board feels about that, but we're going to try to make an application to the county to see if there's any monies there for, you know, historic renovation of St. Margaret's.
I guess probably what the procedure would be, Rosemary, is to bring it to our attention, whatever that grant application is. We'll take a look at it and see how involved it is and whether there's an obligation on our part to provide matching, whether we have staff to do it. So it's involved, but we certainly would like to see what they have available. Thank you. Okay, let's see, where are we? We are Senior Services Committee, and I know we had a member here a minute ago, but he's...
Yes, we have Rose here. And Dick, if they want to speak.
Yes.
Do you want to talk about the meeting?
I'm sorry.
The Senior Services Committee?
Did you want to report?
Rose, can you report on that?
Other than tell you, the minutes have just been completed, I really don't have that much to say on the Senior Services Committee.
Okay.
I have an announcement to make, but I'm going to wait till the end to do that.
Okay.
And then?
Meeting's coming up this month, there'll be more, news at 11.
Yeah, we'll be meeting this month, or, we're out of here. Our next meeting will be over at Red Hook Commons.
Oh, that's right.
And we all have a speaker, you know, who is, and more on that later.
You know, we've had some information from the Dutchess County Transportation Council, they've been talking to us about the loop bus. And so that's what's happening at the last meeting, they had about 20 or 30 attendees.
And if we can work out something with transportation, there'll be a number of seniors who will be very excited. Yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah. That's great, that's great, that's wonderful. Thank you. Anyone have anything on trails?
They had a meeting, which I did not attend, and my apologies to Howie, he did send minutes, which I didn't bring. So they're anxious to move forward with the Aspen Wall Road access to the rec park.
Mm-hmm. Tree Committee, anyone?
I guess I'll have to speak for Nancy. She can't be here tonight, but we're actively working on the forestry management plan. And Brenda Kegel, I saw her out the other morning on Pitcher Lane, very early in the morning, like 7:30, marking trees. So we're actively working on that and we're having special meetings in the afternoon at 2:00 to work on that forestry management plan. And we're also working on Arbor Day and Earth Day, which is sponsored, incidentally, by the Tree Commission. And a lot of effort is going to go into that day, so I hope everyone will be there.
Yes, thank you.
And congratulations for the seventh year of being a tree city.
Hooray for Red Hook. As Nancy would say, yay, trees! Okay. Zoning Review Committee, there is a brief nod to their...
They haven't met in January, February, March.
Right.
But we may be bringing the fence issue back to them, so.
Okay, good. All right, so those are, those are committee reports. Has anyone, I have just one piece of correspondence and then we'll take any further public comment. And it is a letter from Solar Tech Renewables, a letter of appreciation regarding Bard College solar project building permit. I'd like to personally thank you and the town board and the planning board for the method and manner in which you supported our application for building permit for our Bard College solar project. We were provided professional, well-defined and concise guidance and direction through every step in the process. Expectations were clearly set and documented in a manner that facilitated compliance and velocity of execution. In addition to the process and end products, the method of working together to mutual benefit of our community, be it our community of friends, families, schools, government, et cetera, is founded in mutual respect and appreciation. Michelle Gregg, Sue McCann, Christine Kane, the planning board members, Steve Cole, and especially Paula Schoonmaker emulated that persona. It is an honor and pleasure to work with the town of Red Hook and I encourage and support it without reservation. And that is from Christopher Ralzante. Thank you.
Tape change.
Okay, we're almost finished. Tape change. We're at the point where we can take the final public comment. Is there any public comment? Yes, we'll start with the gentleman, I think, who's been patiently waiting, Dick.
Two things. When you go through the EIA on hydro fracking.
EAS.
EAS. There have been a number of reports where a number of companies, it's basically a blind threat. If we use less toxic chemicals, it's going to be more expensive to you and cost you money. But if we use more toxic chemicals, it's cheaper and we'll do it anyway. I get real uptight with that, being a chemical guy. And it's something that, when you go through the data, when you go through the information, you write the law, you must look for that kind of a thing when people make that, that argument. A lot of that's being made out in Pennsylvania and a number of areas out in the Midwest where hydro fracking is gung ho and no one is stepping back to look at what the impact is and of hydro fracking. The other thing I want to do is actually an announcement, and I forgot all about it. A while back, I went to the Farmers Museum and they have the state carousel there. Each character on the carousel is hand carved by a volunteer from the state of New York. On the top of every major carving is what we call a freeze plate. And there were about six left and it was during our bicentennial, and unfortunately, I had medical problems in the family, but I completed the carving for the freeze plate for Red Hook. It says Red Hook on it, has our apple, our hook in the middle, an apple on one side, and EST 1812 to commemorate our bicentennial. and EST 1812 to commemorate our bicentennial. They called me about three days or so ago, said it was approved by the Archival Association for the state of New York, and is now being installed on the carousel. I will be up there around May 20th. I'm going to a master's carving class, and we'll photograph it and bring that back to the town.
Great. Well, we thank you very much. We talked about it. We did, we did see your sample of the face of that carving, Dick, at our last town board meeting, and we were very appreciative and are very appreciative of the work you did. Thank you for doing that. It's so appropriate for Red Hook to be in the Farmers Museum. Thank you. Linda?
Regarding hydrofracking, I'm delighted on the board's stature on this. And I was wondering, as we go through the process, how are the other townships doing as far as they're accepting or denying hydrofracking? Because water goes through all the towns. Do we know what is happening at Rhinebeck and Columbia County?
Billy Jaborwick passed an anti-fracking law, but that would be a long ways for the water to run.
After we get this finalized in, you know, paperwork, can that be sent to surrounding towns so that they know that Red Hook has done their work?
I can't speak for other towns, but I know from my own experience that if there is an issue that is a hot topic and a town moves forward, it gets everybody's attention. And we're certainly hoping that this will provide some encouragement to towns around us as well. The steps we're taking are, I think, important, and I'm glad that we have board support for it.
So there's no way of?
No, I haven't a plan to disseminate the laws, if that's what you're asking.
Not just everything.
Maybe publicity, maybe the press that was here tonight will note that we are moving forward with this, and it'll catch everybody's eye. I hope so.
Hopefully, they will get answered to.
Yeah.
And the Cooperative Extension maintains a spreadsheet of all the towns in the county and the environmental-related ordinances that they all have. So this would be added to that list.
Environmental Management Council, they're, are they more active in getting the information out to the public?
Yeah, I don't know how they disseminate it. Through the CACs, for sure. So the CACs and the other towns would have easy access.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other public comment? Okay. If we may, I thank you for coming and for your attention tonight. Thank you for working on your scout badge. And thank your dad for being with us. And I'd like to move that we go into attorney-client now. A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.